Good evening and welcome to the Fifth District City Council Town Hall Forum. My name is Carrie Christine McElroan and I am the Ward Chair representing our Fifth Councilmanic District for the Wilmington Democratic City Committee. Thank you to the City Committee for sponsoring this series and to our Ward members for their efforts in planning tonight's event. As part of the City Committee, the eight individual wards seek to engage neighbors on matters pertaining to government and city life by providing information on Democratic candidates, representatives, and issues of interest while advancing get out the vote efforts in support of the mission and vision of the Delaware Democratic Party. We welcome participation from citizens throughout the city in our wards, especially in this all-important election year. If you live in the Fifth District and are interested in joining us, please contact me via our Facebook page at Fifth Ward Democrats. To learn more about the Democratic City Committee, visit wilmdems.org. Primary day for this election, why we're here tonight for the Fifth District and for other city races, is on Tuesday, September 15th. In the interest of your health and safety during COVID, all registered Delawarean voters may now vote by mail for all upcoming elections, including this state and city primary and the presidential race. Your vote in both local and national elections is more critical than ever this year as we all face unprecedented challenges throughout our city and our country. Voting by mail is a safe and easy way to make sure your voice is heard. All registered voters, again, will receive a vote by mail ballot request form for the primary in the mail. You may fill out this request form and either return it in the provided postage-paid envelope or complete it online at HTTPS iVOTEDE.gov before September 11th. Once your request is processed, you will receive your official vote by mail ballot and you can fill it out and either return it in the provided postage-paid envelope or drop it off at your county election office anytime before 8:00 PM on September 15th. Voting by mail, it is simply an option that's being made available to help protect your health and that of your family. If you prefer, you can still vote in person at your polling place. Visit elections.dellaware.gov to check the status of your vote by mail ballot or to find your polling place. You may also contact the Newcastle County Elections Office with any questions or concerns by phone at 302-577-3464 or by mail at votebymailncc@dellaware.gov. Thank you all for participating in tonight's town hall with us. I'd like to introduce you to Nicholas Brock, First Vice Chair of the Wilmington Democrat City Committee, who will give a brief overview of tonight's schedule as we get started.
Thank you, Carrie, and welcome to our viewing audience. My name is Nicholas Brock and I serve as Vice Chair with the Wilmington Democratic City Committee. And as Carrie mentioned, tonight's event is the first of many virtual town halls the City Committee is hosting. So please like and follow our Facebook page, remain engaged regarding municipal, statewide, and national elections in the 2020 cycle. The rules for tonight's virtual town hall are as follows. Candidates will be provided four minutes for introductory statements and one minute for closing remarks. The town hall will be broken into two segments, the first being the moderator question segment and the second half being the participant question segment, featuring questions submitted prior to the town hall and those gathered from the Facebook Live comment section. So if you have any questions during the tonight's event, please don't hesitate to submit them through the feed. Each candidate will have one minute and 30 seconds to respond to each question and where permitted, will have the opportunity for a 30-second rebuttal at the discretion of the moderator. Matt Marshall will be tonight's timekeeper using green, yellow, and red indicators to signal to candidates time remaining during a given response. And the moderator for tonight's event is WDEL's Evening News Reporter Sean Green, who covers Wilmington and Newcastle County councils and also serves as the play-by-play sports announcer at the radio station. For those unable to watch tonight's town hall over Facebook, WITN Channel 22 is providing live-time coverage of tonight's event and will continue to rebroadcast the virtual town halls on a television channel leading up to the election. And with that being said, I'll now pass it on to Sean Green to kick off tonight's programming.
Well, Nicholas, thank you very much and good evening, everyone. Good evening, Christian and Brigida. And we're going to start, as Nicholas said, with the four-minute opening statements and based upon the drawl of numbers, Christian, you won the drawl and you get the opening statement.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank everybody who is viewing this tonight and I wanted to thank the Wilmington Democratic City Committee for putting on this event. And I want to thank my fellow candidate, Brigida Fields. It takes a lot of effort to run for office and I appreciate your commitment to the community and to service. The Fifth District needs a strong advocate who understands the needs of the community and can get things done. For the last 10 years, I've been working with residents, churches, faith-based organizations, community organizations, and business owners in the Fifth District to improve our neighborhoods. I want to take this same focus and commitment to Wilmington City Council so we can move our neighborhoods and city forward. I want to talk a little bit about my background and experience, but if there's two things that you take away, I want you to know that I have a track record of moving things forward in our neighborhoods. And second, I'm not here for my concerns, I'm here for yours. And I want to work for the residents of the Fifth District to make the improvements that our neighborhoods need. So about my background, I moved here about 12 years ago and for about seven years, I launched and ran West Side Groves, which is responsible for a lot of the positive changes we see in Cool Springs, Tilton Neighborhood, and the Hilltop Neighborhood, including the Rodney Reservoir Community Garden, the Delmore Community Garden, the Cool Spring Farmer's Market, the renovation of the Connell Street Park and the Father Tucker Park and the Forest Street Park that we worked on with the City of Wilmington, also Friends of Parks groups that we helped to create and foster at parks across the neighborhoods, and the renovation of houses on the 100th Block of Dupont Street for first-time homeowners, and also a homeowner repair program for residents of the city. In addition, for residents of the Hilltop Neighborhood, after West Side Groves, I served as the First Executive Director of the Wilmington Land Bank for almost two years and launched a lot of the programs with that citywide program focused on bringing back vacant properties back into productive use. And there I had impact on the entire city and also on, specifically in West Center City, the vacant properties and included in that was doing greening projects on vacant lots in West Center City on Madison Street and Adams Street, and also a project to renovate six townhomes, six homes for homeownership, a little bit outside the Fifth District on Ninth Street, but still to bring back abandoned vacant properties and make them available to homeowners. After the land bank, I started my own business. I wanted to focus on bringing resources to the community and I started to write grant proposals for community organizations. And in the last, in 2019, I raised over $2 million for community organizations in Wilmington for after-school programs. So that's my background. I also want you to know, I'm not here for my concerns, I'm here for yours. And our campaign, we've knocked over 1,000 doors and made phone calls to 500 voters and we've heard what your concerns are and that's our platform. Better parks, increased public safety, improved housing, fair and efficient government, and supports small businesses. I thank you. I'm looking forward to the rest of the town hall and I ask for your vote on September 15th.
Thank you, Christian. Now we will move on to Brigida Fields and her opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. I am Brigida Fields. I just want to first, I want to thank the Wilmington City Democratic Committee, along with thanking the Fifth Ward Democratic Committee. Christian, I would like to thank you for agreeing to do the town hall with me as well. You want to talk about, we want to talk about me and you want to know me. I am a lifelong resident of West Center City and the Fifth District. I bring along with me a legacy, a lineage of giving back to the community, being in the community, being the activist in this community. Me personally, you know, my mother, she was, she's actually the matriarch of West Center City. My aunt, she's named the wayfinder of West Center City. But the Fifth District doesn't just consist of West Center City. It consists of neighborhoods throughout the Fifth District. We have a lot of neighborhoods. We have the Old South, West Center City, Quaker Hill, Cool Springs, Tilton, and a little, Little Elly as well. So when it comes to knowing and being engaged in the community, you have to be able to touch on every piece. And I've had that opportunity from a young, from a young child. I've seen what we've been able to do, where we can go, where we've been and where we can go within this district. It doesn't just stop. We've had a lot of talk about plans. Now it's time to take things to action and the action is moving forward, focusing on the Fifth, the entire Fifth District. Yes, we do have wonderful parks. We have wonderful areas for our children to play in. However, we need to take those parks and we need to re-renovate, we need to renovate those parks. We don't need to build more parks. We need to build, we need to take those homes in those vacant areas and put places where we can have training in our district. We don't have to utilize another district to, for housing homeless or housing, training places. We need to utilize what we have right here in the Fifth District. As far as me, as far as my education is concerned, I graduated from a public school, Christina High School, right here in the Christina School District. That's why I was a firm advocate for the Christina School District Referendum because education is key. I received my bachelor's degree from Norfolk State University, the best HBCU. Okay? Also, I received my, my master's degree in Health Service Administration from Strayer University. So, you know, I can have all the degrees in the world, but at the end of the day, it's about that community engagement. It's about getting to know your community, it's about getting out there to know your neighbors. So I applaud people and I ask everyone to look at me. I am you, I am your neighborhood, I am your neighbor, I am your community. So I'm just asking for your vote. And I am, I am planning, I have been planning in this district and I've grown. So I'm asking for your vote, September 15th, for me, Brigida Fields. Legacy, leadership, and vision. I see where we can go and what we can do in the Fifth District. Thank you.
Thank you, Brigida. Again, if you're just joining us and if you have questions as this night goes along, you can submit them on the Facebook Live page and our moderators will send them along to me for the second half of this town hall. The first half of this town hall will be questions that I have selected. No one has seen these questions in advance besides me. And we'll start with the first question and we'll get into some of the issues of Wilmington, but I think first, let's get a little more of an opportunity to meet both of the candidates. And we had Christian give the opening statement, so we'll go with Brigida with the first question here. You're both running for a spot on City Council for the first time in your careers. So who is the person, local or national, that you most admire in politics and why? And we'll start with Brigida.
You want to start with me? Okay, that's fine too. There, you know, I look at and I admire AOC in New York. She is, she is very much for her people, she's very much for her community and she stands for, she stands for something and she falls for nothing. And that's the one that I can model behind. Now, not just nationally, how about locally? We have a lot of women and men that I admire and that I definitely take a lot from. You know, again, being in this community, being a young adult, attended meetings, being in meetings with Mr. Blunt, Mr. Ted Blunt, being at City Council when Mayor Jim, when Jim Baker was mayor. There's so many different, there's so many different people, but they've taught me, they, I've taught, they taught and I've learned so much by seeing the interaction throughout their community and their love for the city and their passion.
All right, Christian, we'll go to you now for 90 seconds.
So it's kind of a surprise question, but I have to think that somebody that has really inspired me and who has, whose experience has taught me a lot is Representative Melissa Minor Brown, who's a, she was a freshman representative. And she ran a campaign that was based on reaching out to voters, understanding their issues. And also, I've heard her speak about her experience as a nurse and how that's informed her, the issues that she care about, she cares about. And it just, her running just really inspired me that when you care about things and you want to make a change, that running for office is, is the way to do it.
All right, thank you, Christian, for your answer. And now we'll move on to some of the more Wilmington-based topics here. And again, we're going to alternate back and forth who goes first. So Christian will get the first question in this next segment. And the question involves police and violence. And there have been 76 shooting incidents and 13 murders inside the Wilmington city limits in 2020 so far this year. How do you account for this violence and what can the city do to try to bring these numbers down?
So in terms of the, what is causing the violence, I think that we understand, we all understand that there's too many people who have access to guns, who are, don't have, haven't grown up with the opportunities that they need to pursue their dreams. And when we, when I've been talking to voters, they talk about the young people and a lot of the violence is being driven by young people. We have two, we're losing too many children. And they say that a big part of it is, is that we have not given them the opportunities that they need to do other things. So it was a question also, what would I do about it?
Yes.
I think that we need to bring, I think we need more opportunities for young people and I also think that we need to bring back community policing to restore trust between residents and the police. And so that the police are no longer the police, but they're an officer that we know. They're, by community policing, I mean people who are based in the neighborhood. They are working with residents to resolve community issues. They know us and we know them and that we work together to restore safety and peace to our streets.
Thank you, Brigida. Now, your opportunity and the question about what the city can do about the murders in the city.
Okay, thanks. So what we can do is, you know, being, if, you know, when I go on City Council, work with the police, work with the city police and council on tactics just to improve, improve public safety altogether. I want to be able to encourage the police to become a part of their community. I have seen the community policing and I've seen where they've gotten off their cars, where they've taken the time to get to know the community that they're, that they're policing. So that is a plus. However, we want that, we want them to be, we want to make the community more comfortable with, with our police. So there has to be some type of training along with the, with the, with the community, along with the police. Also, as far as the shooting and, and that type of thing, we have to work with, we have to get engaged and get the guns off the street. Is that an easy task? No, it's not. But keeping the children engaged, and you just don't start with the children, you start with the parents. You work with the parents. You work with bringing them into the neighborhood, community centers to see what the issues may be at home. That way we can cut down and we can reduce the amount of children that we have on the street with programming, enlightening program to teach them life skills, mental health skills. That's one way. I'm sure there's several different ways, but that's one way, but we can work on the rest.
All right, we thank you both for your answers on that. Now Brigida, you'll get the first question here, or first shot at this next question, also in the violence and police category. Wilmington Mayor Mike Brizicki has pledged $1 million for body cameras, a topic that has certainly been a big debate amongst Wilmington City Council in this session and some of the other sessions in recent years. Do you feel this is a necessary investment for the city's police? Could that money be spent in better ways to, to ensure better policing in the city?
I believe it's, it's a great investment. We definitely, we definitely need body cams. I feel like it, it will make, it's going to be, it will ensure security and on both sides, the police and the community. That way they know that the man is watching. That means that they're accountable for whatever actions they take, whether it's, whether it's, whether it's the person that's being, that the cops are talking to or whether it's the police not, not taking, they're not doing what they should be doing as policing, I want to say policing friendly. So body cams are definitely a plus. I think that the mayor is taking the right initiative as far as the body, body cams are concerned. I know with that, we can definitely cut down on a lot of things. And let's work on, let's work on surveillance cameras too. Let's put more surveillance cameras and more lighting in these areas as well. So if we have all three components, that would definitely reduce a lot of crime, a lot of policing errors, a lot of community errors. And that will cut down on the lawsuits because we have to be held accountable for how the body cams and, the body cams and the surveillance cameras are protecting our community. So yes, I do agree.
Ms. Willhauer, your response?
Yes, I also support body cameras to be worn by Wilmington Police Department. And I've supported body cameras since the idea was first initiated a number of months ago in City Council. And it's because we need accountability and that body cameras offer that to the public. And I think the public is in, is more and more wants to be able to be sure of that accountability on the part of police. But I think that part of that has just been that, that we need to restore the relationship between the residents and the police. And it's just one step towards restoring that relationship. So body cameras are a necessary step, but they're not, they're not the only step. And as City Council, I really would be a firm advocate for focusing on not just body cameras and technology. And I think cameras are important too. You know, in the neighborhoods, the camera should absolutely work and they should be used to deter crimes and to, to solve crimes. But we really need to focus on restoring the relationship between the police and the residents so that there's trust there and so that, so that we know each other beyond just seeing each other as the police or as people that, you know, that are on the corner, people that are, we need to have people know each other so that we can work together to solve the problems before they become crimes.
Thank you for your response. And now we'll move on to one more question in this category. And Christian Willhauer, you'll get the first question here or get the first shot at this question. Recruitment for the police, especially minorities, has been a challenge in a lot of areas, including the city of Wilmington. What are some ideas you have that City Council can try to pass to help make it a more representative police department to the mix of races in this, in the city?
Well, the, the last, the last class, the last police academy, I know that council asked for a report to be prepared by the police chief documenting what kind of outreach efforts that were being made by the police department. And I think that the police department has made a significant effort and I think Wilmington police do have a fairly significant diversity within the force, but there is room for improvement so that it better reflects our communities. And I think that the role of council is to be that accountability. Even if the policy was there, if the public didn't know, then the public has less confidence. And so I would, I would really continue that role of being, of asking the questions and making sure that we have the transparency that the public needs to be able to trust the police department and understand that they're doing the right thing. But in order to reach more people, it's all about outreach. You have to know where are the graduates, you know, reach out to the colleges, reach out to the community colleges and make people aware of what the opportunity is. And there's nothing that attracts people like better benefits and pay. So I, the administration is responsible for setting all of that and negotiating with the, the union. But if we want to attract people, we also have to offer them an opportunity that, that looks good to them, that is attractive.
Ms. Field, your response?
My response to this question is diversity training. We do, we definitely, we definitely need all colors, from all backgrounds on, on our police department. It's essential to our living, it's essential to our district, it's essential to our community for others to see that you, I look like you, you look like me. And that way you can develop that relationship. And as far as, you know, I want to say, you know, culture sense, cultural sensitivity training is going to be a key factor, no matter who, who, who we put in training for police, who signs up to be a police officer. I think that it does have to become very, it does need to be attractive to everyone. Some feel that they may not be ready for that. But we want to be able, as, as me sitting on City Council, I want to ensure that those who are very interested in it and becoming a police, that they have all the tools that they need in order to be effective police officers throughout our community. And we also want to, want to reduce the micro-aggressiveness and unconscious bias with, within the police department. So of course, you know, there's, there's different things and there's different policies and procedures that need to be visited, I'm sure, but I'm not on City Council and I don't really have that, that, that information. However, I am, I am really excited about working with, with, with the City Council as far as the training and getting new, 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 new people on the police force.
All right, we thank you both for your responses to that. We're going to move on to a new topic here and Brigida has the, the first answer on this question. We're going to go to the economy and vacant and downtrodden properties continue to be a problem in many areas of the city. And what do you feel should be done about landlords who are not keeping up the quality of their properties?
Okay, so accountability, that is the key word. The landlords need to be held accountable for these properties. These are businesses. When you have a business, you need to be accountable for taking care of your business. Right now, and, and I'm going to just give you a real short story. When my mother was alive, I just happened to, she, it was nighttime and someone came to her office and they needed, they wanted her to come look at the conditions that they were living in. This person was paying 800, maybe $900 to live in an apartment that was painting over, the toilet was falling through the, through the, through the floor. So what we wanted, what I would like to do is to make sure that everyone is held accountable for these properties that they own. Now, if you're a good landlord and you're a good landlord, you take care, you take care of your, your residents, then this bill, then this bill doesn't affect you in any way. But if you're one of those landlords that, that take advantage of these people when they're living in these deplorable situations, then you should be held accountable. And that's, that's just, you know, it, it's just as simple as that. You know, we go into, should they be charged a fee? Yes, they should be charged a fee. You should be, you should be, you know, there's no way we can move, we can move as a city if we aren't taking care of our people. You know, we have, like you said, we have vacant housing. We have people that want to be in affordable housing. We don't want people to just stay in a rental property. So yes, you know, I, I really think that the landlord should be held accountable for everything that, you know, that they, that they have, their properties, I think they should be accountable.
Ms. Willhauer, your response?
Yeah, I agree. And I think almost all of us know that there are landlords in the city that are taking advantage of renters and that we need to be holding landlords accountable and making bad landlords take care of their properties. I would, this would be something that I would really be, would be a top priority for me on City Council. And I think that there's three policies that would go a long way to addressing our rental property problems. The first is, is registration. We have almost half of our rental properties, we have about 15,000 rental properties in the city and fewer than half of them are registered. And when you're not registered, that means you're flying under the radar. I think that we need to make a priority and I would work on legislation that would impose penalties, higher penalties on properties that are not registered. A second policy that I would really work hard to bring about would be to bring back pre-rental inspections. It's currently in the code, the city doesn't enforce that part of the code as consistently. I think that we need to bring back pre-rental inspections so that when a renter moves into a unit, they can count on it meeting certain, on meeting standard conditions. And last, I think we need to do regular, we need to institute regular rental inspections. This is time-intensive, but I think it will pay dividends in terms of stabilizing our neighborhoods. And people won't have to live in the conditions where their rental property is, is not healthy.
All right, we thank both of you for your answers to that. And now we will continue on with And now we will continue on with the economy section and it's Ms. Willhauer's chance to go first here. And the question is, there's been a concerted effort by the city to improve the riverfront and market street districts over the past two decades. No one can argue that they look much more beautiful than they did in the nineties and certainly before then. While some neighborhood groups have argued there hasn't been enough attention paid by the city to specific neighborhoods. How do you balance the two needs of the city specifically in this fifth district?
I think that a strong downtown and a strong riverfront depends on strong neighborhoods. So that when we're thinking about building our city, we need to be thinking about both from the, from the beginning. And as far as investment in neighborhoods, there has been tremendous impact of investment in downtown and the riverfront. And I think that we see the impact of that investment and can appreciate how much it has changed our city. I think that there's investment that can be made in the neighborhoods that will have similar impact at the neighborhood level. And that we need to take a, a approach to residents, to neighborhoods that is also based on promoting an investment, promoting investment. And there are some policies that I have looked at that are, that are used in other cities to promote investment in neighborhoods and to strengthen neighborhoods. One of my top priorities would be a homeowner repair program. So that low income seniors who are struggling to repair their homes could have access to grants to make needed repairs, to make sure that their homes were healthy. Another program that other cities have used to, that, that sustains homeownership. Another program that attracts homeowners is down payment and settlement assistance. And that's because a lot of people in Wilmington are paying more in rent than they would pay in a mortgage on their home. But the barrier for them to buy a home is that chunk of money that they have to bring to closing for down payment and settlement. But we, other cities have effectively used programs to, to pay for that down payment and settlement assistance. And I think that that would go a long way to, to stabilizing our neighborhoods. And we need programs like that that are specifically focused on neighborhoods and strengthening neighborhoods. And I would be committed to bringing those about.
Ms. Fields?
Do you mind repeating that question? I heard some of it, but I need to begin.
There's been a concerted effort by the city to improve the riverfront and market street districts over the last two decades and maybe a little longer than that. While some neighborhood groups have argued there hasn't been enough attention paid to neighborhoods. How would you balance the two needs of the city, especially here in the fifth district?
For one, Sean, I'm, I'm just going to go back to a girl that was brought up right there on Second and Madison. Second and Madison is only, but it's a stone throw away from the riverfront. If you were here, you would have known it was nothing down there. And you're right, it has been developed. Then if you go around, you got downtown Wilmington. If you go around that, you have Delaware Avenue and then you go right back around it's a circle. So a gentleman, and he, he knows who he is, he talked about the fifth district being a hole in the domain and that's what we are. So being on city council, I'm going to ensure that I am, I, I have the ability to sit at the table and talk with the current administration to find ways to develop our community. We, we, we haven't always been like that, but we have the opportunity to move forward. Given the opportunity, given the right, the right resources. You know, right now, we, we currently have construction and different things going on. If we were to, to, to use those, those, if we had people from the neighborhood working on those sites, that way it brings in, it brings in the economic development to, to rebuild our district. That, that's key. But you also have to have the, you also have to be able to sit at the table and be fair and be able to agree to disagree. What's good for our district? What do we need for our district? How are we, how are we going to say, you know what, no more just coming in to survey? We need you to survey and give us the grants for our district. So that, 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 that's my answer for that.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to stay on this, a similar topic to this. And Ms. Fields, it'll be your chance to go first here. What do you feel the biggest need for District Five is?
Job training and building skills for this district. And I'm going to say as an overall scope, not just, not just West Center City, Hilltop, an overall scope. Because we have a, we have a pool of, of, of different backgrounds. So, you know, just building off of that, we definitely, we definitely need to consider, opportunities should be considered. Training should be offered. It shouldn't have to be, you know, and I get that we have Delaware, the Department of Labor, I get that we have that. But some individuals don't have the opportunity to make it over there. I think that information should be accessible at the community centers where people can walk to and they can, they can get the, they can get the information there and they can find out about the training and job opportunities within the district. It, it's just important that the more, the more we get involved in our district, the more that we get our constituents and those in need and the diversity that we're, that we're dealing with in our communities. The more that that's taken care of, I, I, I know that we can definitely see economic expansion. I know that we'll be able to see more affordable housing going up. I know that we'll start seeing people take, take pride in their areas that they live in, take pride in their neighborhood. And then that's the way that our district begins to grow. It all comes from pride, it all comes from being passionate about your district. It all comes, but, but it has to stem from somewhere.
Ms. Willhauer, your feel for the biggest need in this fifth district?
The top priority that I've heard in talking with residents in the fifth district as part of this campaign is that people care about public safety and they want to live in safe neighborhoods. And that is true in West Center City from residents that I've talked to, that's true in Hilltop from residents that I've talked to. And it's true in Cool Spring, Tilton Park from residents that I've talked to. And people want public safety, they want to feel safe, they want to, they want their children to feel safe, they want to be able to go outside. But people also define public safety and want public safety to be, to be rooted in, you know, the community being stable and families being stable. And people, many people understand that in order to have true public safety, we also need to be working for our youth. We need to be creating opportunities for them so that they have things to do after school. And then another contribution for public safety is exactly what Brigida was talking about, economic opportunity. We need connection between residents and opportunity for jobs. And finally, you know, again, we need a stronger relationship between the police and residents. People want the police to get out of their cars and to walk around and to establish relationships with them. And it's true, there, there are times when that happens, but we need more of it so that we can have, that we can have safe communities as a, as a top priority for residents and is really the foundation for healthy, for families to grow up, for children to grow up and for our neighborhoods to be, to be the places where we, we're confident that we're doing the best for our families.
Okay, we thank you both for your responses to that. We'll move on now to a new topic, Ms. Willhauer will get the first shot at this question. In the wake of the killings of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor and others, Wilmington experienced a series of protests and a riot where this reporter was punched in the eye. What do the protests and the riot represent to you? And how does that translate into something that city council can do to improve the city of Wilmington?
I mean, first and foremost, those events were about justice for George Floyd. And people, and African Americans are, are no longer willing to tolerate violence by police against their community. And I firmly, I stand with them in that. I think that in America, we need to have every person know that the police are here to protect them. And, and where there are police that haven't done that, that have betrayed that trust, we need to hold them accountable. So that was the first, that's the main priority of those events. In addition to that, I think that there are ways in which those events in Wilmington were about people seeing development underway and not feeling it was inclusive enough. And part of my commitment to being on council is to build, make sure that the growth and the economic development of Wilmington benefits all of us. And that people see themselves and their own, their own future in, in the development that's going on in Wilmington. And I think we can do that. I think we've made tremendous strides in economic development in Wilmington in the last, you know, four years, last three years. But we need to make sure that everybody feels part of that and we extend, we extend that and create opportunities for every resident of Wilmington to understand that that growth and development is for them.
Ms. Fields?
So I'm going to say body cams and that protects the rights of the citizens and the police. So people can know the truth and they can see the results of, they can see the results of building trust throughout the city of Wilmington. Now, we talked about the Black Lives Matter issue and we talked about how it affected our downtown. And, you know, I just want to say, you know, Pete, I, I live a few blocks away and it, and I didn't feel like there was a need, there was a need to leave the area. I understand the frustration of many Wilmingtonans who don't, who, who think that they weren't included in the rise of the city. But Wilmington has much more to offer and we have, we have to make sure that everyone in Wilmington is included in the benefit. So, you know, we as a community, again, I'm, I'm going to bring it back to the community. We are, we are, we're, we're building, I can remember downtown Wilmington didn't have anything but a sneakers, the sneaker stores and hair, and hair stores. And we need to, we need to take off, we need, we need to take and build off of what we have now. Do we have to rebuild? Yes. And I'm hoping and praying that the businesses down there aren't, aren't leaving. Because we have to be, we have to be transparent on city council about what we're doing, how we're trying to build, how we're trying to involve our community, how we're passionate about what we need to do in order to just stay focused. So, and, and, and Black Lives Do Matter. So that's where, that's where, that's where we're going to go with it.
Okay, Ms. Fields, we'll move on to the, the next question here and it's a fairly similar vein. The statues of Caesar Rodney and Christopher Columbus were, were taken down by the city in June in the days following the protests in Ryan and Wilmington. Mayor Perzicki said the city would keep them in storage until discussions can be had on whether they should be brought back. Would you bring them back? If so, why? And if not, what should they be replaced with?
We, we, we've seen those, we have statues all over. And I do understand exactly where the mayor is coming from. There is a discussion that needs to be had. Do I think they should come back? No, I think they could be replaced with, with other, with other positive statues. And it doesn't even, it doesn't even have to be an African American person, a statue. It just needs to be something that, that, that shows positivity throughout the, throughout the district, throughout the city. We need positivity, we need things showing that we can grow as a community, that we can grow as a city. I just think that we, we should take the time to have the discussion and include the community. Ask them, not just us on city council, not just the mayor, not just the higher ups. We all have a voice, my neighbors have a voice, the constituents have a voice. And that's going to be key to that discussion and where they want to take it and what they see. Our textbooks and textbooks and things like that, it shows the history of those, of those statues. But let's implement some more history. Let's show them the real history. Let's show them history that isn't being explained or they don't have the vision to see. So, yeah, I, I, I would prefer to have that discussion a little bit further. But for right now, I, I don't want to see statues come back. I would like to see other, other things put in place of those statues, positive visions for our city.
Ms. Willhauer?
I think it was a, a good move on the part of Mayor Perzicki to take those statues down at that time and with the message that we need time for a community discussion about the future of these statues. And I also agree with my fellow candidate, Rita Fields, that it, it shouldn't be the decision of one person. You know, of me on city council. I think it's something that we need to have a conversation about as a community. And that part of that conversation should be focused on what those statues mean to the people who like them and also what those statues mean to the people who don't like them. And we need to talk about that and be willing to have that discussion now as part of moving our, moving our city forward. And whether or not those statues come back or there's other statues, I think should come out of those conversations. And that doing that would be a positive, it would be a positive benefit for the, the real diversity that exists within our city. So that instead of having that diversity tear us apart, that that diversity could bring us together. And you only do that by talking with each other about the things that you care about and understanding your differences, but also understanding where you can find common ground.
We thank you both for the answers to that. Want to remind those of you who are watching, you can submit questions on the social media links on Facebook Live. We'll be taking audience questions during the second half of this after we wrap up the last two questions in this segment. And Ms. Willhauer will get the, the first question here as we move on to education. First, we want to begin the segment with the acknowledgement that city council doesn't have a lot of direct say on education in the city. But these are issues that I think are certainly important to Wilmingtonans. The city of Wilmington is currently served by portions of four of Newcastle County's five school districts with no traditional public high schools residing in the city. While Wilmington City Council, again, has no direct input in districting, do you feel that that needs to change? Does there need to be a Wilmington city district? If so, why? If not, why?
So I, the, the goal for education reform needs to be to make sure that every student in Wilmington has access to a high quality education that prepares them for whatever it is that they want to do in life, whether that's college or career after high school. And we currently are not offering students, and many students in Wilmington this, and that needs to be our top priority. Now, the path to doing that, again, that is not, like you said, that is not, the city council doesn't have responsibility for making those kinds of decisions. But as city council member, I would work very closely with the constituents, the residents of the fifth district, the families of the fifth district and to understand, you know, their needs, but also to work with the decision makers who do that, make that decision, which is the state level, you know, the senate, the state representatives. And we need to, you know, there are also community organizations that played a huge role in this. The ACLU has, has, has a court case and there's community organizations like the Coalition to Dismantle the New Jim Crow that have taken a very important role in these issues. And I'm committed as a city council member to be part of that discussion and to be advancing the interests of our students with the people who have the information and also have the decision-making authority to make the changes that we need.
Ms. Fields?
Okay, I feel like education is important. That's something that I was told, once you get it, can't nobody take it from you. So with that being said, as a city council person, I know that I don't have any direct say. But I will work with the, with the state and other agencies to ensure that education is, is key throughout our community. Now you ask about, should the city of Wilmington have, has, have its own school district? I think all school districts should be equal throughout the state. It shouldn't be, you have this thing, you have that. We're a small state. We, we have the capability of doing what needs to be done for our children. We have the capability of making sure everything is done on an equal scale. And when I say that, let's talk about, let's go back to homeownership and paying school taxes, making those houses, houses affordable for those who want to own homes. So just, just to equal, just, just to have the, the equal schools and the equal, I want to make it equal all the way around. It, it, it doesn't have to be a different school district within the city. Some people want that, I just feel it's, it's not necessary. We can fix what we have right now by working on that. I want to work within the community to develop and implement a plan where the, where we further engage the stepping stones that will advance our inner city to better education and better tools for education.
Okay, one last question for me on the education topic and then we'll go again to the, the questions that we're getting on social media. Ms. Fields will get the, the, the first crack at this answer. The Red Clay and Christina School Boards recently had discussions about school resource officers inside of schools and their impact on students in the school communities. Do you feel that that is a necessary expense for districts? If so, why? And if not, how would that money be better spent? And again, Ms. Fields is first.
Oh, okay, that's, okay. At some point, it may be necessary, I don't know to what extent. I never had to deal with it, but times and, and, and the days have changed. So I see that there, there is a need and I feel that like the, the school board and the school district, they, they have a better understanding of what's going on in their, in their schools. So what I supported, I would, I was supported with better knowledge and understanding of what of what, why they feel, um, the need to have these police there. I do think, um, with the policing, they need to, they need to have the same type of training that our Wilmington police have. And that would be, um, that would be sensitivity. That would be, um, mental health, mi- mental health training, how to communicate with the youth. You never know what a, what, what a, what a youth is going through when they come to school. So you have to be, you have to have those police to be sensitive, um, to what's going on with the youth. So sometimes a friendly face from, uh, from a police officer is key. But we, we definitely, you know, if, if, if the districts feel that those are the need, yes, I, I, I agree with that. But let's have that discussion more. Let's see where it, where it impacts our youth and it impacts our teachers. Do they feel safe? Do the children feel safe? Um, so yes, I, I agree, but let's have that discussion more. And as a city council person, I will work with those schools and those police offices.
Ms. Willhauer.
I think safety in schools is a huge issue and you can't learn if you don't feel safe. Um, and that we need to be making, that our, our priority has to be safe schools. Um, and there's a lot of students who go to school and don't feel safe. Um, and students that I've talked to in the neighborhoods that don't feel safe at their schools. So school safety is, is something that we really need to address as part of education, addressing educational achievement, uh, among Delaware students. Now, again, I just want to underline Wilmington city council members don't have decision-making over this. It's the school board that makes decisions around school safety officers. And, um, there was a meeting, a couple of meetings this, um, this summer where, you know, hundreds, 300 people, uh, residents showed up at the school board hearings in for Red Clay and had a dialogue about that. I think that we need to, um, you know, as city council member, I want to focus on those decisions that city council has decision-making over, um, so that we can make progress in that area. And then support leaders and also, uh, residents, support community engagement in those areas where the decision-making is made by the school board or where the decision-making is made by the Delaware state legislature. I think we have to, to some degree, stay in our lane and do the best of our ability within the job that we have. And that's what I would try to focus on, um, as city council member. Because I think there's a lot of work to be done by Wilmington city council that is related to that role.
Okay, that will wrap up the, the questions from me as part of this town hall. We'll now move on to questions that have been selected from the, the Facebook Live. And Ms. Willhauer will get the first question. And it comes, the question is, how would you bridge the neighborhoods to work together in building the fifth district? There's certainly a, a mix in this district. How would you go about making this a more cohesive fifth?
Well, you know, here are some of my background doing West, working with West Side Groves. What the whole goal of West Side Groves was to link the neighborhoods. And the goal was to, um, the focus was west side, west of I-95. But we connected the civic association leaders and the community organizations into one steering committee that works, worked consistently and the organization, uh, still continues. Um, and I'm happy to say that that organization has also, uh, worked, um, to include West Center City through, um, uh, projects over I-95, bridging I-95. I haven't been involved specifically in that project, but I think that community organizations that are focused on linking neighborhoods can do that. Another thing that I think is, is that, and I would work with them, I would work with them and support their efforts. And another thing is, is that as, um, fifth district member, a lot of the issues that people care about cut across the neighborhoods. In my, we're talking to voters, people care about public safety, people want parks to be improved. People have common issues and I think connecting people around their common interests. And, and so that people understand that we're working together for the change that we want across the district. Um, that's the way to bridge the gaps and to make, make our, we're building, um, the whole fifth district so that we're building our neighborhoods, um, to move forward together. Another, um, thing is, is just, well, I, I'm running out of time, but I'll stop there.
Uh, the, Ms. Fields.
Let me just start by saying, how do, how, you had, you asked, how could I be on city council and unite our district? Um, and like, and like Chris, Kristen, Kristen said, we have to bridge the gap. And that gap has been there. I've witnessed the gap for years. So I want to start with the block captain association. We can build our community, we can build our district back block by block, one by one, with implementing our block captains. That means every block captain is held accountable for their block. That way they let, let, they would let me know exactly what needs to be done, what needs to be fixed on that block. That way we're uniting. Let's talk about the civic associations. Getting the civic associations information out to those members in that particular area. Walking and knocking on doors, making phone calls, I'm finding out that some of those neighborhood residents say that they don't have the, they, they're not informed about these things. They haven't had the opportunity to attend. So I want to make sure that everyone is inclusive. Again, it's inclusive. Um, every neighborhood has the same issue where you want to talk about housing, economic development, public safety and affordable housing, but it's just a flow of how they, how they, how they're numbered. So, um, yeah, we all have the same issues in every neighborhood. However, we have to unite and we have to sit. Maybe, maybe I, I, I'm thinking as a city council person, I know what I would implement is a quarterly meeting with all the civic, all the civic association leaders to find out what needs to happen in our fifth district and how we need to move forward and how we make that connection from one side of 95 to the other.
Ms. Fields, the, the next question will begin with you. If you are, and I guess you go to feel when you are elected to the city council, what is the first piece of legislation that you would bring up to the, to a committee?
I would bring, I mean, there, there's, um, there's several. Um, but right now I, I see that public safety is key. And very important to everyone throughout, not just the fifth district, but throughout the entire city of Wilmington. So I'm going to go back to the body cams. I'm going to go back to less support the body cam, um, initiative. Um, but let's take the right measures in order to, to bring those, um, forth in our city. Let's make sure that we're, we're utilizing these, these cameras, um, and, and the legislation is beneficial, not just for, um, the police officers, but for the community and they're utilized correctly and they're, um, monitored correctly. That way they're not turned off. That way, um, the, the, the citizens aren't saying that they're not used. We also want to, um, we also want to be sure that, um, lighting is readily available. You know, some of these areas, whether they have on a body camera now, the lighting isn't well. So there, there's a couple of things throughout the, you know, um, working with the body cams that we have, we have to implement as well. So we have, we want to work on the body cams, but we also want to work on better lighting in these neighborhoods. And we also want to work on the surveillance in these neighborhoods. That way accountability is going to, accountability is, is going to be key. And that's what the body cams are going to do. They're going to hold everyone that comes in counter with them accountable for, um, what's going on.
Ms. Willhauer.
Um, a first piece of legislation, first area of policymaking I want to focus on is rental property registration. You've got 15,000 rental properties in the city of Wilmington. It's my understanding that less than half of them are registered. You cannot have oversight over what you don't, um, you don't know. If we get those rental properties, um, and we know where they are, we know who owns them, um, then we can start to provide the kind of, um, accountability for landlords that we need to maintain rental properties. And the, there's options for that. One would be to introduce legislation that uh, increases the penalties if you don't have a rental property license. That would be one piece of legislation. And a second would be legislation at the city level or maybe working, um, with our, you know, legislators at the state level that you could not evict a tenant if their landlord didn't have a rental property license. That would be a way to get rental property owners to be, um, to be enthusiastic about registering their rental properties and it wouldn't cost a dime to the city. It would create an incentive for, uh, rental properties to license their properties. And that would enable our L and I department to be able to have a sense of what is the universe of rental properties so that we can, that we can roll out our enforcement process to hold those landlords accountable. And to improve the quality of rental housing for tenants and also to improve our neighborhoods and the stability of our neighborhoods for everybody.
We're going to stay on this topic, I think, with another question that has come in and Ms. Willhauer will get the, the, the first chance to answer this. Wilmington's rent prices rival Philadelphia with a fraction of the income opportunity. How are you going to make sure Wilmington stays affordable for the people who have lived here their whole lives?
Um, I think that that's a good question. And one thing that we see in cities around the country is this runaway increase in housing prices. And right now with COVID, there's many people who've lost their jobs and there's threat of eviction to many households that no longer have an income. I think that housing, um, stability is something that we really need to, um, pay attention to. And to answer that question, I think that we have to maintain the, uh, housing that we have. So we have to maintain the rental housing. We have to bring the standards of the current rental housing that we have up to, so that it remains available. We have to make sure we don't, uh, lose rental housing. At the same time, we have to figure out how do we increase the amount of, uh, housing that's available in the city that is quality rental housing. And not just in the city, we need rental housing in the county, in Newcastle County. We need affordable rental housing in Newcastle County and we need affordable rental housing in the state of Delaware. I think another thing that I am very much, uh, is a top priority is to find ways so that our current residents who are renting can buy in the city of Wilmington. And when they buy, when residents are able to buy at prices, current real estate prices, and then as prices go up, that price is no longer a rent increase for them, it's an increase in their equity, it's an increase in their household wealth. So I'm very committed to find ways to move people who are currently renting into homeownership opportunities. And that's using policies like down payment settlement assistance. Thank you.
Ms. Fields.
I'm just going to say rent control ordinance, just like other, just like other cities. We need rent control ordinance within the city of Wilmington. That way, um, and we, and we can model, we can model other cities to see exactly how it was utilized and how we could, um, somewhat, um, work that into our ordinance and working with our license and inspection and, um, move it and, and, and just partnering with other agencies, uh, throughout the city and the state to ensure that the, um, that the, that the, the rental, uh, that, that, that the rent is affordable for all. And I can agree with Kristen. Yes, we do need, um, we do have renters that want to own homes. But we have to make sure that those homes are affordable. We have to make sure that those homes are, um, accessible for those, for those people that want to own homes. We have to ensure that we have program, homeowner programs that are effective for our community and our neighbors that want to own these homes. So with, with that being said, there are programs in Pennsylvania. If you rent from, um, if you went, if you went from an agency, they take that money, take some of that money and put it in the first time home buyers program for you. So I'm looking to work with my members on city council in ways to implement that type of rental ordinance and we, resources for those individuals who want to own homes, who want to be able to leave a legacy for their children. So that's how I would implement that.
Okay, we, again, we ask if you are watching this, you can submit a question on the Facebook Live link there being passed along to me. And this is the part of the town hall where the audience is getting to ask the questions for the two candidates and we'll move on to Ms. Fields getting the first shot at this next question. And, uh, the, the current city council is, for lack of a term, very divided. There have certainly been some ugly moments during some debates in the last couple of months. How would you try to change that to move the city forward?
The election, September 15th, 2020, that's one way. Another way is just being able to sit at the table and, um, be able to agree to disagree. It's not about, it's not about my personal agenda. It's about my agenda for my residents. It's about the agenda for the district. It's about the betterment of, um, the constituents throughout the, the fifth district and the city. We have to put personal, personal things aside and we have to focus on what's key. We can't do that if we're bickering and we're arguing over, um, over things. A division is, a division, with a division, nothing can accomplish. When we work together as a whole, when we work together as a, as, as a government, we can make anything possible. We can, we can pass positive legislation, beneficial legislation. Things that are going to benefit us as a community, as a city and, 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 uh, prepare us and move us forward throughout the city. You know, and, and it just take, we have, we have to talk constructively to each other. It has to be a respect issue. We have to be able to negotiate and we have to be a win-win solution. I don't think all the trash should be, um, thrown out in the middle of the floor. I don't think that we should be using, um, using derogatory names, calling names. But, um, with the right people in my city council, like me, we're going to be able to work, we're going to work past that. We're going to be able to sit at the table and make the decisions, um, for, for our city, for my constituents in the fifth district.
Ms. Willhauer.
So I've been, um, doing community work for a long time and, uh, you know, there's always a lot of conflict. And people come at these issues from, uh, very different places. And I know that there's been conflict on, uh, city council. And, um, my approach to dealing with conflict is to, um, understand that people have different perspectives and that there's value in understanding what is that person's perspective? What, where are they coming from? Why do they have that opinion? And I've found that a lot of times that you learn a lot from listening. And so I would focus on listening to my fellow council members, um, seeking to understand their positions. And seeking to understand, like, how does the different perspectives, how can we make our legislation better based on the dialogue? And also I think that we need to, um, have enough respect to hear people out. You know, people do, uh, sometimes express themselves in ways that's angry or I've, I've run across it all, you know? And you have to be persistent, you have to be patient, you have to understand, you have to listen to what are they saying behind, uh, maybe their anger. And I think, um, in those cases, I really think the debate around public policy issues, it can get heated. But that heated, heatedness is about the passion that people have for wanting to solve problems. And once we start to recognize that and, uh, work with people as, you know, fellow problem solvers, I think that we can, um, get the job done. And our residents, they want results.
Sean, can I say something?
Yeah, we can do, uh, we can do a back and forth here. Yes.
Okay, so, um, and I, and I understand, you know, uh, things do get heated on the floor, but it, it's, it's a respect issue. And we have to know that the seat that we sit in, we didn't put ourselves there, the residents put us there. So we need to respect those who put us there. Um, so to, we need to reflect those, we need, we, we need to reflect a positive, um, outlook to our community. Um, heated issues, there are, there are times, but again, in those heated arguments, there's no place for negativity. We should be able to sit on city council, agree to disagree and move forward. We need to make sure that whatever we do, it's going to benefit our community.
Okay, this is just a 30-second segment here, Ms. Willhauer, chance to respond.
Yeah, and I mean, I don't mean to say that I'm going to be angry or I'm going to act out or anything like that. I mean to say that, um, I think that, and I do believe, I agree with you, um, Ms. Fields, that we need to, you know, act a part on council and I, I would, but I think that by our own actions, we can, um, you know, be the council members that we, we think that everybody should be or act in the ways that we think are important. At the same time, I think that we can, I'm, I'm committed to, um, listening and to learning from everybody's perspective and using that dialogue and, uh, to, to make the policy better.
Okay, we're going to move on to another topic here, another submitted question. Again, you can still submit your questions on the Facebook Live in this segment. We're going to go till about eight 25 in this area. Uh, do you see raising the property taxes something that's going to need to be done to achieve the changes that you want in the city of Wilmington? And Ms. Willhauer.
Oh, um, well, it's my understanding that the role of council is to approve the budget, not to draft the budget. So I, um, those decisions about whether or not there's a need to raise property taxes are usually made first at the administration level. Um, at, you know, at this point, I don't have enough familiarity with the budget and what the constraints are. And certainly what the constraints are going forward with COVID and the impact of COVID on, uh, the income. And certainly what the constraints are going forward with COVID and the impact of COVID on, uh, the income of the city to say whether or not that's going to be needed. But I will say that I am committed to making sure that the city resources, that we are a good steward of city resources and that we are using city resources for the greatest bang for our buck. And I respect that people, um, do not have, as much as the city may be, uh, facing, you know, financial problems, residents are facing financial problems. And I would, I would take a very hard look at any proposed property tax and see if it was really necessary or if there were other things that we could be doing to reduce expenses or to, um, you know, put off, um, expenses so that we would not have to raise property taxes, especially at this very uncertain, um, you know, economic times.
Ms. Fields?
Yes, um, raising, raising, um, taxes, not, not right now, not right now at this time, um, what we're going through with the pandemic, I, I don't see it, um, I don't, I don't see where it would be justifiable, only because we do have, like Kristen said, and I totally agree. Uh, we do, we do see where people are losing their homes, people are losing their jobs. However, you know, um, moving forward to see how, you know, things pan out as far as, um, things go. And again, I don't have all the answers as far as legislation and the budget is concerned, but we do want to ensure that, um, you know, that we take care of our city, um, and we want to make sure that we are financially stable. But right now, um, raising, raising the taxes on homes i- is just not foreseeable. We need to get out of what we're in now. We're, we're, right now, we're, we're working with other, we're working, working with state agencies. Um, at currently, you know, to help individuals with their homes. They're getting help with, uh, mortgages and, and rents. Uh, people are still looking for jobs. So, you know, you can't take money from, you can't subtract what you, you can't subtract from what you don't already have. So, you know, residents need, need money to, um, just for basics right now. So now, um, let's, let's talk about that, um, in the near future when I'm on the council. Where we visit that later.
Okay, we'll move on to another viewer submitted question and this, uh, in the topic of arts and culture. How important do you view arts and culture in our city? How many arts cultural events have you attended in the past year that's before the pandemic? What were they? Were they concerts, museums, dance shows, theaters, art shows? And if elected, how will you support and promote the city's arts and cultures? Please be specific and Ms. Fields, the question goes to you first.
Okay, um, I've always wanted, um, always been one about arts and, um, music, uh, you know, um, have I, I've been to, uh, I don't, I can't, it, it's been a while that I can really particularly give a actual event. But I know that, um, I know that arts and craft is very important. And I'm going to say that from a young adult stage, I'm going to say that from a child, um, from a child's perspective. At Western City, we took up sewing, we took up art, we, we did, um, what is that ceramics, we learned how to sew, they took us fishing, um, we learnt music, we learnt dance. We had piano lessons and violin lessons right there at William X Anderson Community Center. So it gives, it gives our youth and it gives our community a overall, um, being of being able to be flexible and, um, just being flexible to all walks of life. So art is very important. We need our children, we need our children and our youth to express themselves through art and, and, and different things like that. I've worked with Quaker Hill Associate, uh, Quaker Hill Association Preservation, where we, where we incorporated, uh, trips, um, concerning the Underground Railroad. I took them on trips, um, to see the, um, I took them to, to the movie to see, um, the Harriet. Um, we talked about, we, we talked about, we, we engage our students and our community, um, our community, our youth in the community about what actual history we have right here in, in, in Quaker Hill. So that's important. Thank you.
Ms. Willhauer?
So the question is, how important do I think arts are in the city? I think they're super important and I think that they're, um, you know, they're fun. They create economic, uh, they have an economic impact, they, they're a reason to live here. I think that we need to do whatever we can to foster the arts community. Um, the last event that I was, and, and specifically, you know, I think that means that we have to have an open, we have to, the city needs to have an open door to all, a lot of different artists, like, you know, I, we, we have to work with the wide variety of artists in the city of Wilmington, uh, to make sure we have, you know, an inclusive art scene. Um, that, because I think that that, that is what makes the art scene interesting. And so, you know, to give an example of that, the, um, Art Loop, um, I think is a great example of that kind of thing where, um, the last maybe arts event, you know, a lot of the arts events this summer have been canceled, but, um, was an Art Loop, I think it was this fall, and I went to three different events. One was at the, the Delaware Contemporary, and it was a fifth district resident who was exhibiting her artwork there. It was on jazz, it was paintings at the Delaware Contemporary. Then I went to the, um, on the same Art Loop to the Creative Vision Factory. It was another fifth district resident who was the, the focus of the show. Um, and he, his focus is public transportation and he's, he's, he does, um, he does paintings, um, of, of, of buses and the public transportation system. And then the last was, um, at the, at the Christina Cultural Arts Center, it was, um, Tony, it was a Tony Morrison honoring her, uh, life and legacy. So it was an incredible night and it was, it was artists from our neighborhood. I think we need to do that. It's, it's, it's how we build, uh, the richness of our lives and our communities.
Okay, we'll move on to another viewer submitted question. Ms. Willhauer will get the, the first shot at this question. What is your vision for the Fourth Street Corridor? And how will you go about implementing it?
So the Fourth Street Corridor is, uh, um, gateway to downtown. It's not only a neighborhood mixed use, commercial, um, residential district, um, that runs through, um, you know, from the suburbs to, I mean, you know, from the seventh district, but through, um, Hilltop, through West Center City into downtown. So I think that we need to, uh, start looking at Fourth Street and making improvements to Fourth Street as a gateway to downtown. We need to work with the anchor institutions along there, like Be Ready CDC, like Latin American Community Center. Um, like, um, and like the businesses that are on the district and that the, the homeowners that are on that street. And we need to, um, work on anchor developments that, that, um, that lend a sense of momentum to Fourth Street. And in addition to that, I think that we need to look at leveraging state dollars so that we can, uh, improve the sidewalks and the lighting and the, the, you know, street trees where, where they fit in, um, the, 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 um, seating for buses. So the, and we need to look at state resources. So specifically, the state has, uh, transportation grants that are for, uh, for pedestrian infrastructure that are, that are allocated around the state, and that's a state highway. I think that in Wilmington, we need to look at how do we partner with the other resources at the state and federal level to bring the changes that we want for our neighborhoods.
Ms. Fields?
Yes, um, so what I gather is, um, the corridor i- is going to reflect the, um, Hispanic heritage. Um, and you know, want, wanting bright color is going to be for a bright color housing and et cetera, et cetera. And I think that is, um, a great, that, that's a great opportunity, but let's bring it for both sides, not just one side of 95. Let's bring it to both. And I agree, Kristen, we definitely need to bring it down Fourth Street. And I've always talked about how we definitely need lighting, we need better lighting. We need, um, we need that vision to, to incorporate, um, not just one neighborhood of the fifth district, but all of them. Um, diversity and inclusion on the fourth, on Fourth Street as a whole will reflect the entire district. Businesses, um, businesses in, included, you know, let, let's talk about some of, um, the nuisance properties on Fourth Street. Let's talk about those. Let's talk about how we can, how we can, um, work with those, how we can work with those to, um, to, uh, kind of just, you know, get those out of the way and, and build a better looking, uh, Fourth Street and, and, and make the connection. Yes, um, yes, we do have to partner with all state agents, other agencies. But how about we as, as, as council people, take the initiative to find grants ourselves? To, to reach out to other, to find out, um, how neighbor works. It's, it's an organization called Neighbor Works. How they worked with the community, um, um, in order to, to work with the, the scape of their main streets and how they made it more, um, more beautiful, you know, how they, how they beautified their, their, um, their main street.
Okay, that will wrap up that segment. We'll move on to another question here as I look to bring it up really quickly. According to this, uh, Facebook, uh, live viewer, and again, this question will go to Ms. Fields first. Uh, according to this Facebook viewer, the city, if the city isn't attractive and safe, you can't attract outside investors or businesses. How will you work on council to achieve this?
Thank you for that question. It's a collab, it, it, it's a collaborative effort. I can't do it by myself. You're, you're asking me about bringing businesses. We have what I think is called, um, DT, DPP. And that organization right there, they're working, they're working along with the current administration to bring businesses into the city of Wilmington. Um, and you, you, every city has crime. Every city has, um, has, has a blight issue. However, just, just working with, um, working with the, working with the agencies, um, and, and the current administration, that, that's doable. That's not a question.
Ms. Willhauer?
I'll say that.
So the question's about attracting investment and new, uh, residents to the city. And I think, oh, one thing that would go a long way towards that is just highlighting what we already have here at Wilmington. I mean, we have in the fifth district, we have great neighborhoods. We have, uh, you know, great restaurants. We have great, uh, businesses that are, that are, um, that a long time been owned by, um, residents. And I think Wilmington could do a lot more to highlight the, um, the, what we already have here and also the community feeling, um, the kind of, uh, atmosphere of Wilmington. We need to be, we need to highlight that. And there are other cities that have, that have done this more effectively. Like Baltimore has a initiative called Live Baltimore, where they highlight their different neighborhoods and they talk about how great they are. And they have people who live in the neighborhoods talk about how great they are. And I think we could do more of that here, you know, we could, there, a lot of people who live in Wilmington really love this city. And we can, we can leverage, we can shine a light on that, um, and invite people to join us. And I think that we have to address these underlying issues like public safety, you know, like people feeling like they don't have access to opportunity. We, we need to do that to create the kind of, um, uh, inclusive city and fundamental change that we need. But we also, we shouldn't wait to attract people to our city because we already have a lot to offer.
We'll move on to another question from Facebook Live and Ms. Willhauer will get the, the first answer of this. You both chose to run for the fifth district after the current councilman Vash Turner decided to vacate his seat. Why did you choose to run and how will your tenure be different than his?
It's, I'm, I'm first?
Yes.
I chose to run, I chose to run for the city of Wilmington, the fifth district city council because, um, you know, as a resident of the fifth district, having done tons of community work in the fifth district, I love the district. And I think that the decisions that make, that city council makes, um, impact our district in ways. And I want to bring my experience and background and understanding of what the community issues are to make the policies that we need, um, that are going to result in the changes that people want to see. Um, and I think that I can do a good job at that because I'm, um, you know, it, it's a policymaking role. I think that I can look at what other cities have done and where they have achieved success and bring new ideas to that, uh, seat and to council so that we can start, um, not, not having, you know, solutions that we've tried before and didn't work, but let's have new solutions to the problems that we face. So I think I'm innovative, I have a track record, I'm thoughtful, I have a persistence and, um, people say I'm, I have, you know, um, tenacity. I think all of those are qualities that enable a person to, um, get things done. And also an ability to work with a wide variety of, of people. So I'm excited about, um, what that role has to offer. And I'm excited to bring my background and experience to the fifth district city council seat.
Ms. Fields?
Yes, um, my passion is, my passion is for my, for my district, my passion is for my city, um. Uh, what, what can be, what can be done differently? What hasn't been done, that's the key. And what it had, what, what has to be done is we have to be able to communicate to our constituents. And once you communicate, then that means you're educating those, those individuals. And education is key to any, 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 anything. You have to be able to, to talk to these people. You have to be able to support your community, um. And, you know, I'm going, I'm going to use it. Hey, I'm a lifelong resident. I have legacy. I know where we, I know where we, where we were. I've seen, I've seen the progress that we've made and I've seen the progress and I've seen the vision where we can go. So, you know, i- i- it's, it's definitely all about community and it's definitely all about, um, I, I, it's all about being inclusive, about everyone throughout the district. Yeah, we all have track records. We all want to, we all, we've all done, um, community activist things. But again, I'm going to say this, if you don't, if you have to be able to talk to the people and understand a disparity throughout, not just one part of the neighborhood, but you have to be able to understand a disparity throughout the entire fifth district. We all may have, we all may have the same issues, but I'm going to tell you this, they're all numbered differently. Public safety in Western City and Hilltop may be totally different, but it may be in Coles Springs in another area. So, um, I just feel strongly and I feel passionate about the change that I can bring as your council member, as your council member as for the fifth district. It's nothing but passion and legacy.
Thank you both for your response to that. Now, that wraps up the questions about Wilmington. One last question from me before we go to the closing statements and Ms. Fields will get the first shot at this final question, a chance to maybe try to get to know you guys just a little bit better is, is the plan with this question. Who is your favorite author or what is your favorite book and why? Ms. Field, you go first.
Oh, goodness gracious, um, I have plenty. Um, actually, I was reading a book, um, it's called, hold on. Uh, you, you took and threw me off kind of, uh, so it's so, um, you just got to bear with me. But I, um, in the process of getting to read a little bit more, I think my reading, uh, uh, shucks, my reading as, uh, I stopped reading once I got my master's degree, honestly, uh, let's see, kind of something right there, uh, what if I, uh, uh, goodness, my favorite, oh gosh, I had too many. Let's see, I, I apologize because that kind of stopped me, um. Oh, gosh. Let's see, um, important, important book of my life. Um, that, that's one, um, uh, how about the other book about, um, the book about, uh, uh, what do I want to say? Uh, it's a book written, I don't know the author right offhand, but it's a book that I'm reading about Martin Luther King and the difference between Martin Luther King and, uh, uh, Malcolm X and their, their difference in working with the communities and how they approached, um, racism and, um, and how they, how, how they, they kind of had the same approach, but they approached it differently. That's one, that's one of the books that I'm currently reading right now, um, and I'm really finding very interesting. Uh, that's, uh, that's one of them. I don't have too many more, uh, that I can go, go off of right now.
Ms. Will, your favorite author or favorite book?
Um, yeah, I'd just be, you know, answering this question, I just want to, um, give a shout out to, um, my, um, mentor, Mr. John Laskovich, and he's a big reader. He lives in, um, he lives in the seventh district. But he, uh, reads a lot and he has always read a lot from, uh, the Ninth Street Bookstore when it was around. And he would read books and he would pass them on to me. So I just want to thank you, John, um, for all the books and the ways that you've helped me, uh, to learn and understand. Um, and his reading list focuses on leadership and it focuses on, um, policing and it focuses on, um, community building. And the guy has just given me so many great books to read. Um, but the one that I think, um, has made the most impact on me recently and really is part of kind of, um, thinking about the overall strategy of what do we need to do to address, um, Wilmington's housing is a book Evicted by, um, Matthew Desmond, I think is the guy's name. Um, and it's, it traces the role of eviction, um, in some families' lives and also in some neighborhoods' lives in Milwaukee. And it looks at all the different players, like the renters, the landlords, um, the, the license and inspection. And then it lays out some policy options for how to address, uh, the rental, the eviction crisis. And he's, through that book, he's really brought attention to eviction. Um, and there are thousands of families that get evicted in Delaware every year. Um, and for me, you know, housing policy has to be about how do we promote housing stability as well as housing quality? how do we promote housing stability as well as housing quality?
Thank you both for your answers to that. I know that wasn't the most, uh, common question you might have expected at a town hall meeting, but, all right, Christian Willhauer, she got the first chance on the opening statement. So we're going to reverse here for the closing statement. And Brigida Fields, you will get the floor here for your closing statement.
Okay. Um, in closing, I just want to thank, uh, the Wilmington City Democratic Committee and the Fifth Ward Committee. Again, I want to thank Kristen Willhauer for agreeing to do the town hall with me. I want to thank the community of the fifth district for attending the town hall. I want and need my, my constituents of the fifth district to vote for me, September 15th, 2020. I talk about moving the fifth district forward and that's what I'm here to do. Let's talk about three A's, accountability, accessibility, and, um, and action. Okay? So we have to, we, accessibility, I am going to be accessible to my constituents. Accountability, I have to be accountable for those, I have to be accountable while I'm accessible and taking action. There's no more talking about it. I have to be about it. And that's what I'm here for. I am a lifelong resident of this, of this district and I know that with me in this seat, we're going to move the fifth district forward. No question of that. Thank you. And again, vote for me, September 15th, Brigida Fields.
Ms. Willhauer.
So I also want to thank everybody for hanging in here, um, um, for the entire event. Um, and I want to thank again, the, um, Wilmington Democrats, um, for hosting the event and to my fellow candidate, uh, Brigida Fields, um, and for having this discussion together. And I just want to say again, if there's anything you take away from, um, this, I have a lot of experience, um, and ideas. I'm committed to, uh, working with resident leaders on moving our neighborhoods forward. And also I'm not here for my concerns. I'm here for yours. My goal is to work for you. Vote Christian Willhauer, September 15th.
And again, we thank both of you for participating in tonight's town hall. And now I'll pass it back, pass the floor on to our hosts for the evening, the Wilmington Democrats.
So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Um, this concludes the fifth district city council candidate town hall. On behalf of the city committee, thank you, Sean and WDEL for moderating tonight. And thank you Brigida and Christian for engaging our voters. I'd also like to thank city committee officers Nicholas Brock and Matt Marshall for their work in planning and running tonight's event. Visit wilmdemms.org to learn more about the Wilmington City Committee and keep following us here on Facebook where we will continue to host town halls for all of the city races. Finally, thanks to all of you, everybody who attended tonight's town hall. We appreciate you taking the time to get to know our candidates in the fifth and being part of this important process as we elect our representative on council. Please be sure to cast your vote in the September 15th primary. Remember to check your mail or visit ivote.de.gov to easily request your vote by mail ballot and return that ballot as soon as you can ahead of primary day. Your vote in 2020 elections is paramount to keeping our democracy intact. Thank you all and good night.